...analysis of what's gone on before. And there's several things which I've tried to raise, mainly as, okay, we have a variation on residential zoning, in my opinion. I hope Gail Morrow is successful. I hope she can pull out of this a successful business based on her genuinely desire to sell flowers. However, it's a variation on a residential zoning which, to be quite frank with you, as I've said in my PowerPoint, I don't think is actually a sustainable business case. And what I'm concerned is, to be quite frank, that whatever the board approves, at the end of the day, if it doesn't pull any of enough business to survive, as my neighbor, Greg, just said, in two years' time, there might be another applicant doing the same thing again, trying to get further clarification or whatever. And really, on the last page of the PowerPoint, all I've tried to do is pull together some of the points I'm making. Based on the weight limits on Coolidge Highway, how can this business actually have sustainable deliveries of pallets of materials? You take an F-250, put one pallet in it, you're done. You're above the weight limit. Sorry, you're below the weight limit. Two pallets, you're above it. So obviously, if you've got delivery trucks bringing in compost or fertilizer or whatever, they're not going to specifically tailor their rounds so that the truck is almost empty before they arrive here. So there has to be some mechanism of doing this. I think most people have said here, and in fairness, Gail said herself, she doesn't want to do heavy-duty landscaping. I think the whole neighborhood would be happy to have her there selling flowers if it's the board's decision that they want to have effectively a medium-term commercial property in this area. The only thing I would say is, we've talked about the limitations of the 1975 zone. On one of the pages here, I've pointed out where it is. Well, all the land behind that's being tilled for commercial plantation. Is it the intention of this board to have commercial plantation going on outside the 1975 zone? I implied in my document, if you approve building the big garage structure at the back there, it's tacit acceptance of the fact that you've got roads there that have been laid by previous owners. You aren't going to take a vehicle up and down a mud track. You'll use the road. Likewise, in order for this to be a profitable and sustainable business, I think the board has to consider not only the 1975 area, which is part of the application, but what the applicant wants to do with the rest of the land. Looking over it from my house, I can see it's been very nicely tilled. She's obviously preparing it to plant some of these pretty flowers. Great. But is that what the board wants to happen to a residential area? Personally, I wouldn't object to having flowers there, but I'm not a legal guy. I'm an engineer. I'm just saying what I observe. Right? And then Greg's just made a comment about previous abuse. I think, to be quite frank, that's outside the scope of this meeting. It's an emotional and important factor to all of the neighbors, but at the end of the day, I think that's part of the other jurisdictions. So I've not stressed about that. I'm actually trying to just say, here's what happened in the past as circumstantial evidence, and objectively analyze what the applicant's requested, breaking it down and trying to point out objectively, well, this is a bit vague, or that could be interpreted two ways, et cetera, et cetera. And I think you've already said to the applicant, look, please go away and please think about how this is worded. And if it's appropriate, I'll happily help her do that to try and present a business case that makes sense. I have no problems in doing that. Really, that's it. That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to remind the board, please read all this. Please take, for my heartfelt sake, I am trying to be very neutral and objective about this. I'm just trying to break down individual things to engineering principles, environmental principles, things that would make practical common sense. And we've got to find the right way forward for Gail and her business. I don't know what that is, to be quite frank with you. I am very supportive of her trying to produce something from obviously what's an absolute nightmare at the moment. And I applaud her desire to try and help us clean up our neighborhood. Whether that's actually what the board and Troy City actually wants as a long-term future, I'm not going to comment on that. And I want to open myself up for any questions about the, all of the detail that I've put before you, because obviously, I tried to help you all out here.
Thank you. Since the gentleman has offered that up, is there any questions directly for the speaker? No? Okay. I do appreciate, I'm sorry.
I may have a question.
Okay. One thing I would like to say, I do appreciate the effort that you put forth. It's obviously you care about the situation. I know you have a vested interest because you live nearby. I just would like to say thank you for this submittal. It's very useful. Now, I know Mr. Bartnik is glancing through it. We may, if you're going to be here for the rest of the meeting.
I'll happily come back up if you want me to.
Oh, do you have a question?
Just real quick.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You've included some aerial photographs and drawings.
The aerial photographs came from the application. The drawings I did myself in PowerPoint.
Okay. And then the basis for the, the base, the basic facts upon which you put into your drawings are stated elsewhere in your PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
There's one mistake I will point out. In the application, there was a John Deere skid loader, which is an antique, out-of-date 280 model. I couldn't find that on the John Deere website. So in the thing about the garage, I just picked a middle-of-the-range John Deere, pulled the information off the Internet, and put it into this. Subsequent to producing this, I've actually found on an antique site the measurements of it. It's not quite as big, but the principle's there.
Thank you.
Right? Thank you for your time. And Paul, thank you for your help as well.
Thank you.
Is there another person who would like to speak? Sir?
Anything new?
Yes. Again, please state your name and your address of where you live, and if you could comment if you're north or southeast of the property, it'd be helpful. And in the interest of anything specific that we may not have heard, we'd appreciate if you could highlight that first.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name is William Shepherd. I live at 1942, which you can see is on the south side of the property indeed, and it's the third house in from Coolidge. And I want to just say quickly, again, not to go over what's already been said, this may sound like a counterpoint that I might be saying to you, but it really isn't. I do share the concerns of my neighbors that you've already heard from, from the standpoint of what has happened in the past. And there have been some disasters, and I realize that there is a bigger question that we're all agreed, and this is kind of a small piece of it. There, I, today, still have concerns about noise and dust and such that we have had in the past. But I did want to point out one thing, and that is that my house, and with the possible exception of one or two others along that immediate south boundary, I am among the most visually impacted of anyone for what goes on at 6550 Coolidge. There is a fence, a stockade fence, that backs up 1974 and 1958, but it ends at the end of 1958. And beginning at my house and then continuing east, there is no stockade fence there. I in particular have very few visual barriers in my own yard and then along the property line as well. There's a few evergreens, but not much. We see very clearly into that property from my home, especially in the non-foliated seasons, you know, the winter and the spring. And while I, I'm gravely concerned about noise and about dust, I do want to say, and I've shared this with Ms. Morrow, is that I think it will be an advantage to me and my property values if there are a lot of nice growing things over what is now basically barren behind the greenhouses. And I see very positive effects on my lifestyle and on my property values, frankly, if there are nicer things to look at behind the greenhouses than what we have right now, which is nothing. And it's things that we have enjoyed early on after we moved in in 1999 that seemed to sort of start to go away as the business began to depend more and more on landscaping and paver sidewalks and that sort of thing. I have spoken with Ms. Morrow on a couple of occasions. I sincerely believe in her intent to make things nice, but I realize there are some tough questions that have to be answered to enable her to do that. But I just wanted to say that I, from a visual perspective, from where my house stands, I would really like to see her succeed with what she's trying to do. I think it will help our quality of life and the value of our property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Again, sir, we need you to sign in, stay where you live. I'd also like to record, reflect that I know the gentleman, as I used to be a parishioner of St. Elizabeth and Seaton.
I thought he looked familiar, too. For the record.
My name is Jim Mosley, and I reside at 1687 White Birch Court. It's on the north side of the property that we're talking about tonight. My major concern, and as my neighbors have already expressed very well, is the environmental concern that has been so eloquently depicted, both in the pictures and the words that have been shared with this group tonight, and just hope that you could direct us to the group or the commission or the authority that can help us get that cleaned up so that the sprig drain can return to its format that it was intended to be a runoff instead of being dammed and blocked. The other concern that I have is, is the weight restrictions as Dr. Bush described on Coolidge Highway. It's an 18,000-pound weight restriction during normal season, 10,000 pounds during seasonally adjusted. 18,000 pounds on a single-axle 24,000 GBW truck, that truck weighs 14,400 pounds. And like Dr. Bush said, you put a pallet of topsoil that weighs 2,000 pounds on there, they can't bring in anything more. And so I'm very, very concerned with, are we going to offer a variation on weight restrictions for Coolidge Highway for this business to sustain itself? I really, I really hope that this business can sustain itself, but other than a UPS van going down Coolidge Highway, that's about all that can go down that road without breaking the weight limitations. And so I hope that you take that into consideration when we're looking at this whole scheme of things. I'm not sure if that's part of this group or not, but I thought that I'd bring it to this public forum to let you know about that. You know, the two things are the weight restrictions and then the environmental concerns of the sprig drain and its impact on that environmental area. Several years ago, somebody took a study and tagged most of the trees in that, in that wetlands area, and they have numbers on them, and I don't know where they are logged, but most of those trees are now rotted because of overflowing of the sprig drain because of damage and damming that has taken place because of residue from the previous owners at 6550 Coolidge Highway. So I hope that that is something that you can take into consideration. The photos are in that PowerPoint presentation, and so that you know what the residents of the area are faced with in the past. And I hope that we can do something to work this whole thing out within the rules and regulations that the city have established. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Again, not to sound like a broken recorder, but we'll need your name and where you live, and if you could focus on the information we may not have heard to date, that would be, that would be appreciated. If you want to echo the other comments, that's fine, too. I understand.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Trelaw, and I live at 1894 Buckthorne Court, so I'm south of the property. And actually, the view that I have, I won't go over, I know everyone has talked about the view. The, I think what's very, I do speak from an emotional point of view, and I know that you received my information that I dropped off yesterday. I really do welcome Gail Morrow because what has been behind me for the last 13 years or so has been very frustrating. I put in three and a half years of approximately 50 phone calls to the city, speaking with city engineers, city lawyers, just a number of different people. So it's very frustrating that I feel like some of us were misled as to, I was never made aware of the 1975 zoning ordinance, even though I was, I asked those questions years ago. I'm not going to go back over that. You have all that information. I have the same concerns that everyone else has had as far as what really went on in the past, and I don't quite understand how that was allowed for so many years legally. And as I said in the letter, if I knew then what I know now, I would have taken it a step further, like I had said I would, and probably seek legal action. I'm looking for the future. So I have a couple of questions. One, I kind of heard the shed thing. It's in, it's out, it's in, it's out. So I think some clarification on that part would be appreciated. And I know that Gail, she came into my house, I invited her into my house when she knocked on my door. I had her actually come in, step on my deck, and she realizes that a majority of the year, what I have to look at according, and also with the rest of my neighbors on that south side. Behind me basically is a dump, and I know, I gave you some of the pictures, and hopefully you looked at those. When I first bought the property with my husband and my two young children, it was beautiful. It was just a beautiful piece of property. And then I showed you a little bit after that, not too long after, what Mark Walcott had done was basically, he made a dump out of it. And for even a month, you can see there was a picture of a tractor on top of the dump, which was at the back of my yard. So I, too, want to move forwards. My questions would be, because I'm not going to repeat, and you have all that, and you have pictures that I've given that were taken 10, 12 years ago, all the documentation of phone calls for three and a half years. I don't even know how I had time to do that with two young kids and working full-time, but I did. So I would say the shed is my main concern, and I did speak to Gail about that, because from where I live at 1894, and also my neighbors at 1910 and 1926, we would have a view of that three-quarters of the year, because when the foliage is not there, you see everything. So I think it's just the idea of a shed. I don't like that whole idea, but that's just a concern I have, and Gail has said that, you know, whatever, she would work with that. My other question is the whole word landscape. I don't underst, was it in there originally? Is it not in there? Because to me, there is a huge difference, even though the city told me years ago that there really isn't a difference between nursery and landscape, I beg to differ. I think there's a huge difference between a nursery and a landscaping business. And I don't think that Ms. Morrow wants to do that, but quite honestly, if she does sell the business five years ago, and I'm still living there, which I plan on doing so, I don't want someone else coming in and creating a landscaping business, because that's all I've had behind me. And you can see the pictures of the trucks, which was illegal. That was not even allowed. And I know that you saw those, because I gave you, I had great pictures, because I have two little boys who could take great pictures of what was, this was with my backyard.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Excuse me. Where are the photographs?
Okay, he's showing them now.
But I don't see them in the pack, electronic package.
They're not on your desktop?
I hate to say it, as I am.
I have Dr. Graham's, Bush, and then a comment from Gregory and Diane Bald. That's all I have on my desk.
This is all my, these are my photos that I turned, gave, well, actually, the city had these photos 13, or whatever it was, 10, 12 years ago.
I could, for a moment, ma'am, and I did answer your question, Mr. Bartnik. In the, in the full packet that I received, because of me sitting in for Dave Lambert today, I have them. And unfortunately, yeah, in my separate packet that I normally get as a board member, I didn't have them either. But the city is in receipt of them, ma'am, and what we will do is make sure that we all see them.
And display those.
So at the top, those, that's, those are the pictures when we first purchased the property. You can see it was just pretty land. And then what Mark Walcott started to do was, on his own, without legally being allowed to, he started that little, small berm there, those are my boys when they were little, now they're in college, and then he slowly started building this berm. And then it became, there, here's my backyard, my swing sets to the right, and he had this monstrosity of a berm, if you call it a berm, and there's the tractor on top of the dump that was there for months. So I do speak emotionally, because, I don't know, I gave up three and a half years of my life while teaching full-time and having two young children, and that's what I had to look at when I came home from work. And I know Gail has great intentions, and I really, I'm so pleased that somebody new is there, and I really do think her intentions are good, and I want this to be a beautiful place, like when I first bought the property, my husband and I did. So I really do welcome her, and she was kind enough to take a look at my deck and see what it was like, and said that the work that she wants to do, I know it's going to take time, because there's, it's awful back there. And one of the gentlemen spoke, that, you know, Mr. Mark Walcott put up, I don't, what were those called, those big, where he puts all the stones, the gravel?
Yeah.
Yeah, those. It's unbelievable.
Like from the great tournament.
I don't even, and I just, it's very frustrating, because I really did spend a lot of time, took pictures. I was over, you know, with the city, making so many phone calls, and even to the point where they were going to take Mr. Mark Walcott to court, they were up for jury selection and everything. But he promised that, you know, he would do these things to the berm. I don't know. All I know is I'm older and wiser now. So I, just my two questions, but one that I'm questioning is the whole, is the shed thing, the size of it, just the shed itself? I'm questioning, and the word landscape. So those are the two things.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for her.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Ma'am, Mr. Bartnik does have a question. Would you have a moment for her?
I'm sorry? Yes.
You mentioned the court proceeding. What do you recall about that?
Okay, I have a letter.
When that was. Is it in your materials?
It is. Well, there's a letter that states, Dear Mr. and Mrs. Trelaw, jury selection, this is May 28, 2004. Jury selection in regard to the above referenced case has been scheduled for Friday, June 11, 2004 at 8:16 a.m. Your presence is not required at that time. If this case proceeds to trial, you will be needed to testify sometime the following week. If this presents a problem, please contact me as soon as possible. You'll be notified if your testimony is required. If you should have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. And that was the city attorney's office. Okay. And then I guess what they did was, I don't know, they made an agreement with Mr. Walcott that if he made the berm and put up, you know, worked with the, I forget the title of the office, but with landscaping to this berm. I've talked to everybody from every department, the berm department, the this, I can't even tell you, honestly. And what was shown here was not even done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just speak to this issue, because I am from the city attorney's office.
I know you are.
Yeah.
It wasn't you, though.
No, I know. We've had a lot of attorneys. We do, we would be the enforcement agency for anything that Mr. Walcott did, and he was familiar to us. This is kind of water under the bridge, because we're dealing with a new owner, but, and I'm sure she won't have these same issues. But we've had him in court several times. It was up then to our building department to let us know when there were violations of that 1975 agreement, and he was ticketed by the building department when that happened, and there would be court proceedings. This is one of the reasons why we want to get things in writing. You can see that we actually had an agreement and how effective that was. You've got to have the enforcement behind it also. That's why it's important to put things in writing, because from what you're seeing tonight, you can see that that's far beyond what that '75 agreement was supposed to have stood for. But we did have some contact with Mr. Walcott, and if the board would like, it's really not pertaining to the new owner.
Right.
But if you want a history of any cases that we've handled, I can try and track that down for you and what happened to them.
I think that's why there's so much, you're hearing so much frustration, and it is emotional, because, you know, for a number of reasons. So I do welcome the new owner, and I don't, this is, I feel badly for her. My husband owns a business, so I understand the whole business idea, believe me. But for, you know, our property values and environmentally speaking, I mean, there's just so many issues. There really are.
I understand.
So those were, the landscape and the, and the shed, those were my two kind of questions or concerns, I guess.
Excuse me, I think Mr. Courtney has a question.
Yeah, not a question, just on this particular one. There was a landscape plan brought to court, and the court ruled that he had to follow this. He presented a landscape plan, the city was in agreement with it, and the court ruled he had to do it. Apparently, he never did it, but.
Yeah, he just kind of went and plopped some, and I think that's what Ms. Morrow was talking about, or some of the things you told me. You think, they would just plop, remember, in the berm? To get rid of, I mean, it's, it's just ridic, to get rid of that, yeah. He didn't do what he was supposed to do, even when he was told to illegally, as we know.
Mr. Bartnik, did you have, did you have something else, Mr. Bartnik?
No, that was.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Trel. I would like to mention, just for the record, and I know this will be part of the permanent record, and I know, unfortunately, I saw this hard copy packet this evening and had a chance to go through it when I got here. But there's an 11-page documentation between May of '01 through December of '03 of correspondence between Ms. Trelaw and the city, which she detailed. So it's definitely with names of department staff, so it's definitely that there was some effort made to rectify this issue, and I just want that to be noted in the record. Moving forward with the public comment, I want to make known that I know for obvious reasons, and I would feel similar if I lived nearby, might feel very emotional about this, just speaking as a homeowner, that I know some of the comments here speak to the past history of the site, and it does, in a way, go beyond a bit of our mandate as a zoning board. I am entertaining the commentary, and I think it's good for us to hear it, and it's also good for it to be in the public record. Having said that, I also want the public at large who are here tonight and who may watch this on TV to know that as a board, we have some very narrow confines that we can work with under. I think it's obvious to say, although we haven't had a vote, we won't be reaching a decision on this tonight. But I want that to be noted so that you understand what we can and can't do as a zoning board. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the entire city at all, because I can't, but clearly there are other issues here that may or may be looked at in some other manner. That being said, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Ms. Morrow, I will allow you to come up at the end, but I would like to see if there are any neighbors or other interested parties who would like to speak.
I just have one question.
Okay. I would like you to come up, provided that there's nobody else who would like to speak first, though, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? No? Feel free to come back up, sir.
Thank you.
Is it brief? It's.
It's very brief. It's very brief. And so, having heard a lot of things tonight, and there are some emotions, I just want to reiterate the point that I made earlier on. This application was submitted comparing, or asking for clarification for use for what had originally been proposed in 1975. However, a lot of the issues you've heard have been outside that portion. In other words, the land behind that. So my question is, if the new owner is planning, for example, to do tilling on that land or is planning to clear that land and make it nice again, is that within the scope of this meeting today? And is it going to be taken into consideration in whatever conclusion this meeting comes to or subsequent meetings based on it? In other words, not just the narrow boundaries of the 1975 land, but the rest of the property as well? That's really my question. How is that handled?
Well, my comment, and I'm going to allow also a comment from staff after I make my comment, is that, speaking myself as a board member, I believe I'd like to do a little more research on what the 1975 language was. I also want to understand a little bit better what's going on deeper into the property than what I saw, because I didn't go back there to the degree that I probably should have in this case. We need a better idea of exactly what, in the end, very concrete word, and what we would be looking to approve, and how we could help make sure going forward that it can be maintained.
Okay. Because I wish to make a supportive comment for Gail. The greenhouse at the front of the land and the area where she plans to sell things is only part of what is going to sustain her business. The area behind which she's preparing to till and grow, I assume, right? grow, I assume, right, even though it's not clearing up the entire mess, as has already been commented by my neighbor here, she's made great inroads in trying to tidy it up and make it look nice, fine. But the two are linked together. You can't divorce the selling side from the growing and preparing side, and that makes it not just considering the 1975 document now. It's a plan for the whole plot. So all I wanted to, if you like, say to the board is, please, don't just think about 1975, this 1975 portion of the land, as I've marked it on the diagram, right? We have to have a composite proposal that allows Gail to hold her business in the way in which she wants it, which should include the rest of it, if that's the decision of the board that it's an appropriate use for this land. Thank you very much.
Just a moment, sir. The question that you had, I mean, I made a comment, but I think, being a layperson and a volunteer, essentially, I'd like to also, you had to restate it, so that if Ms. Lancaster or Mr. Evans would have something, maybe we can give you some more information. So can you restate it quickly?
Yeah. In other words, if you take the letter of the law and the original 1975 document, and Paul, I've highlighted it in yellow squares in my PowerPoint somewhere, it's a small portion of this property. And if the remit of this board is just to consider that small area of the property right at the front there where the greenhouses are, well, that's only part of what's gone on here. And a lot of, if you don't mind me saying so, guys, a lot of the emotive language is not about that portion of the property at all. It's about the rest of it. Therefore, in order for Gail to develop a business which is sustainable, it's not just what she wants to do with the greenhouses and the structures there, but what is she allowed to do with the rest of it? Is she allowed to plant commercial plants on it? Is she allowed to harvest those?
Ms. Lancaster, I don't know if you had a comment, if you wanted to add, or Mr. Evans, but feel free.
Certainly, there'll be further discussion, and the staff will prepare if, in fact, this is in fact tabled. But just to give you some general principles of law, the 1975 interpretation, anything beyond what was there would be considered an illegal nonconforming use. Probably the best example I can think of is that 1975 interpretation says there could only be, I believe, one truck stored on the property that was three-quarter ton, if I got that right. Anything above that is an illegal nonconforming use.
And also, the diagram had dimensions. You could measure back from the road where the limitation of any development work was. Now, Greg and I had a discussion earlier on. This site predated the subdivisions. And one of the challenges we had in trying to present a neutral and objective case to the board is, well, what was there before? Was it woodland? Nobody would have known. Neither the subdivisions on our side of the road or the subdivisions on the other side of the road were built at the time that the 1975 document was considered and approved. So nobody knows what was there.
Well, this board will be able to interpret the law and come up with a list of things, including uses for that property, that doesn't significantly enlarge the use, but confines it and defines it. So it's not just, she can have a landscaping business without some direction as to what that includes. Illegal nonconforming uses do not continue. So even if he had trucks on the property, the new owner is still bound by the original, because that's illegal.
Yeah.
But the bottom line is that I'm sure the board, I'm sure if the board chooses to table this tonight, staff can help the petitioner, taking all your concerns in question into account and all the board's concerns, help her tailor something to bring back to the board, that you will be more informed about what the plan is, what she's requesting, and then it would be up to the board to decide if they're willing to give her that variance as an enlargement. Maybe not, maybe it won't be an enlargement, but hopefully they can work out the details.
And please note, I don't know what illegally allowed. I'm just mindful of the fact that the growing season's upon us, the applicant has requested a quick decision. To me, it's not about the greenhouses at all. It's about the rest of the land as well. But it may be that the board is not allowed to consider that. I'm not a subject matter expert, so I can't say so. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to come back again.
That's okay, and I think everybody in the audience does know that she is allowed to continue the use that's there. So she's not prohibited from using the property what's under the 1975 agreement, so she can continue to put flowers in there and conduct sales and have people park there. So spring is coming, and it looks like we're going to get a real early summer, so she can continue to sell. But until this board makes a decision about some of her other issues, she can't do those things.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thanks for allowing me to come up again.
Thank you.
Let's see. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? I know you've already been up, sir. Is it, is it brief?
Yes.
Yes, please come up, sir.
Trucks.
I don't want to limit to the potential of anybody to speak, but I...
Eeyore Fedorovitch, again, thank you for your patience. And you said you were a volunteer, correct?
Well, yeah, we, you know, we apply for the board.
So to you and all the rest who are staying so late on this issue, which I think is now clear was much more complicated than was imagined, thank you very much. And thanks to everybody else who spoke up, and thanks to Ms. Morrow, and she's going to come right after me, and I'll be brief. Ms. Lancaster, as I mentioned about those variances, if it's a variance given for those gazebos out front, I think you've heard from everybody, except for all the people who drive up and down Coolidge who didn't bother to come here today, nobody really cares that much about the front of that store, which I'm sure will be nice, and that nursery, and a few picnic tables, and some nice gazebo roofs and structures. Nobody cares. We do have a problem with another shed being built further back, or anything else. There's a disaster that needs to be cleaned up. I don't know how one person, the new property owner, can do it, no matter how much help. Environmental issues should be addressed to other departments, because really, what's killing the forest behind the northern owners, it looks and smells like it's infused with oil. Could be fertilizer, leaching. If they dumped everything else that you can see and that can dam up the drain, you don't know what else they dumped. So that's a very serious concern. And if there's a '75 use, 1975 permission to continue with landscaping, well, no. Then you put covenants on it as much as possible and enforce them. No stone cutting, no gravel dumping, bashing, sorting, and loading with cranes and front-end loaders. You don't mulch on the side, you don't chip on the side, and you don't put 36-wheelers, double rigs, by the way, which is already 42-wheelers, and you saw some of those pictures, and you don't have six or seven of them. They're with bulldozers. So I'd like to conclude on some obvious, common sense things, that, believe me, if it has to be pushed, the law will be found to make sure that justice and environmental issues and the property owners, property rights of the owners surrounding this will also be correctly addressed and victoriously addressed. So this is very important, to understand the problem, I think. Thank all of you for having stayed so long and been so very patient. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. If there's no one else who wants to speak, I want to close the public comment session. But Ms. Morrow, I know you want to come back up and speak. You're actually, your comments will not be part of the public comment, so that's why I'm going to close it. So I'm going to close the public comment at this time. Ms. Morrow, if you have something else you'd like to add, please come up. After you're done speaking, we'll bring the issue back up for the board, and then we'll see where we go tonight with it.
Many of the things that I heard from the south side of what was going on in the property, I had heard before. I did not see until the other day the property, what was going on on the north side. When I first saw the property initially, I was going in as a customer and looking at the flowers and the different things. I had no idea of what was being done on the property. I say to you people, I am so sorry. I have no intentions of doing any landscaping whatsoever. I feel for you, because I wouldn't want my backyard to look that way. I will accept any help. I will even entertain the idea, if the city wants to buy this property, buy it from me, because I just want to try to make it nice. But possibly, this is something that the city, you know, I don't know. I have experience, because my brother's done this for 25 years, just planting flowers and making it, you know, I'm opening up any suggestions, including the shed. I don't even have to have a shed. I'll figure out a way to put my garden tools and my lawnmower and things like that somewhere, just to make everyone happy.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to bring this back before the board for discussion purposes. Does any of the board members have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Mr. Courtney?
Just a comment. From what I see, I think what is being expected is that we're going to rezon the property for her. And instead of us rezoning it, she has to apply for rezoning and go through that process. She may have a good case for that, but anything beyond the '75 ruling with very minor improvements, I would go with some minor expansion, but nothing really beyond the '75. Perhaps tabling until next month and seeing what comes back and giving more thought.
Okay.
In fact, if you're ready, I'll make the motion to table. If not...
I would second.
Excuse me for a moment. Ms. Morrow is...
I don't know if you could decide on, if I'm putting out paragraphs, how can you come to that something that could be decided on, and how do you say, if I...
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Yeah, I know that we're...
The record, this meeting is being recorded.
Right.
In order to make sure that everyone's heard for the recording.
Yeah, I understand.
We ask that anyone speaking step up to the microphone.
Well, I think, actually, not to cut you off, Ms. Morrow, but I think the comments, your information you were providing, you've said statements to that effect. And I think in the interest of moving this forward, we're going to keep the discussion up here. I think there's been plenty of opportunity to speak on this matter tonight. Mr. Courtney, you were in the middle of saying something.
Well, I was saying I'm ready to make a motion to table, and I heard a second.
Okay, all right. We have a, is there any other caveat? So what's the purpose of tabling? And I'm just asking, is it to allow the applicant to go back, work with staff? I'm not trying to lead you, but...
Yes. I'm open to doing minor adjustment. I want to keep my, I want to be a little open-minded and see what comes back, though.
Okay.
And...
Okay.
But I am ready to vote, if you'd rather have a motion to deny at this point.
Mr. Bartnik, were you seconding?
I was seconding the motion to table, because my sense was that whatever the petition is, it's not sufficiently stated right now to really give us an opportunity to give a ruling that's still going to be relevant 5, 10, 15, 20, or 30 years from now. So that was my purpose in seconding that motion, is that I think it would be helpful for the petitioner to come back to the city and talk to the city. And I assume the city tells, as a matter of course, that petitioner should always have the right to have an attorney to review these things for them. And then also, there was commentary from Ms. Trelle's, which is not in my materials. I'd certainly like to have that emailed to us before the next meeting.
Before we entertain discussion of the motion and such, Ms. Morrow, in this little unusual out of order, but could you come forward? I have one question for you before we consider this. The question I have for you, ma'am, is I just want to make absolutely clear. What we're looking at doing is putting forth a motion to table the item to allow you time to work with staff and to tighten up what exactly it is, the variance that you're requesting. Are you agreeable to that? If not, then we can go ahead and discuss what you had given before us. I don't know what the final solution, or I don't know what the decision on that would be, because we haven't voted. But are you agreeable to tabling the motion? I just want to make sure that you are before we do that.
I guess I would agree to table it. I guess I was just thinking that with, you know, the arbors out in the front, I was hoping that I would get a ruling on that this evening.
Well, we'd have to put that to a vote, although, and I can't exactly give you a reading on it.
Okay, I will table.
I feel that it probably would not go through.
Right, I know. I will table it. I agree to table it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Evans?
She's agreeing to table?
Yes, she has.
And the next available meeting is April 17?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not convinced you need a motion to do that, if she's agreed to table it on her own.
Okay.
You can accept that, and we can expect this matter to be reconvened on April 17?
Ms. Lancaster, is there any problem with doing that without a motion?
We have to vote on that.
I would like a count, just because there might be somebody that doesn't want to table it.
Okay, I understand.
Even with her stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion on the board, on the floor, that was brought forth by Mr. Courtney, seconded by Mr. Bartnik, to table the motion until the April 17 meeting. Can you call the roll, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Katsounas?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, the item is tabled to the next meeting. Ms. Morrow, please, at your convenience, reach out, probably the sooner the better, to get, to enlist help with city staff, and they will sharpen their pencils and put on their hats and give you a hand with what you need to do. Thank you. That is the last, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is a procedural question?
Yes.
Because we've never faced it before. We have two alternates, and the vice chairman is the chair. When this item is considered next month, is it the same panel that considers this particular item?
Yeah, by the rules, yeah.
Yes, welcome to the Board of Zoning Appeals world. You know, I didn't anticipate that, but you are correct. They follow the item.
I was afraid that was the answer, Mr. Bartnik, but I didn't want to ask. But thank you for keeping us honest.
However, they would, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, they would only have to vote on that. Why not him? So we have five items. It would just be the one that will save them some of the issues.
But to make it clear to our alternates who are here, you probably do not know what you got yourself involved in, but next meeting you're going to both have to attend. So thank you in advance. That's the end of the hearings for today, so I'm going to close item four out. Item five on the agenda is communications. I'm not aware of any, but Mr. Evans, are there any other communications that the zoning board has received that we should discuss?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was conferring with the council.
In regards to agenda item number five regarding communications, is there anything that we've received, I'm not aware of anything, that we should discuss?
No.
Okay. And regarding miscellaneous, also, those of you who came for public comment, thank you for coming. We appreciate your input. You're welcome to stay at the end of the meeting, but it's just business, administrative business. So item number six, miscellaneous business. Item one, board discussion regarding alternates. I got to defer to staff on this. I'm not sure at this point what the discussion was, or we had to cover, frankly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Courtney.
Before we get into either one of these items, one or two, I think we ought to wait until we have nine of us here, instead of just seven.
I agree. I wanted to see if we could postpone item two, but I wasn't sure if item number one, if there really was anything.
Oh, two, maybe not.
Lengthy.
My good Bloom here, who has made a special appearance to do the open meeting.
Number two, then.
I see.
So if we could do that, and, I mean, she's been patiently waiting. I'd hate to have her come back again.
I agree. Well, Ms. Bloom, we're sorry to make you wait for so long. If there's no objections to the board, and since Ms. Bloom is here special, I think we should go forward with it.
Yeah.
She can talk really fast when she wants to.
My natural presence, and again, some of you have these from before, and again, I do appreciate, yeah, I'm gonna, yeah.
I have to load it up on your machine now. Okay.
Are there changes in here from the last one?
Yes, there are.
And I'll take it. And I'll take it.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have enough. You should have enough copies, I think.
You did a great job. You did a great job, though.
All right, great. Well, thank you. A couple things. First of all, I'm really glad for the opportunity to... for the opportunity to come to you tonight. And a lot of you have heard this speech before, so we're going to make it even more informal. Also know that I have been up since I left the house at seven this morning and been in Lansing all day. So it has been a really long day for me today. So if you wanted to postpone it and come back, and actually, that's one of the reasons why normally I would have just handled the meeting, but I wasn't sure when I was going to get back from Lansing. And so, as it turned out, Ms. Lancaster had to do some of the meeting. But I think it's really important for all board members to know about the Open Meetings Act because obviously you are subject to the Open Meetings Act. And I have done this presentation before. I've included it in the new handbooks that you have. Did everybody get one, by the way? Okay. We do have other copies for the regular members that were there or that are not here tonight. So we can get those to you. And most of you, the ones of you who I've talked with before, you're going to recognize a lot of it. Obviously, the first tab is the rules of procedure for the BCA. The second part is the new ordinance, which a lot of those provisions are the same, but you have the color-coded tabs on there now. And it is different. I mean, it is, we did revise the comprehensive revision, as Member Stratt certainly knows. The next one is the BCA. These are statutory provisions that govern the BCA, and I have updated it as of yesterday. It is current as of yesterday. I just want to caution you, though, you have the statutes, you have the ordinance, but in addition to all of that, you also have a lot of case law. So you don't have any of that case law. So again, that's why you have a legal advisor here, is to give you the extra interpretation that's found in the case law. So even though it might be pretty clear in the ordinances and also in the state statute, many times there's more to the story, if you will. So please do not hesitate to ask us a question. We're always here as a reference for you. And in fact, I mean, it was... Yeah, go ahead.
I do have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to make sure, because this may have taken care of something. I had received, when I first joined the board, a fairly sizable binder, and then I received another reference that was sort of like this. And then the new zoning code came out. And I remember making, yes, I remember making inquiry of Paul about what still applied. And he came back and said, well, these are no good, those are good, but these are good, these are good. And so I kept that email, because it kind of told what was good and what was not. And then there was an email from another board member, and I don't know who it was. It was something of saying, can we get a condensed revised version where all the old stuff is pulled out? Would this suffice that?
This will, for the most part. I'm going to add one caveat, though.
Go ahead.
The zoning Board of Appeals Handbook, which is number six, that is from 2006. That is the latest version. I put it in here, even though it's 2006, because a lot of it is plain English, and it's understandable, and it's really designed as kind of a primer on your role. So again, there are some references to statutes in this, but don't rely on the statutes in that one. Rely on what you have as the case law and what you have in the rest of the book. But everything else is current that you have right now. And we can certainly, if there are significant amendments, we can add to it. And I know Mr. Courtney was, he has this book from before, and it is easy for us to just take it apart and put in a new ordinance, for example, if we get revisions to that. So keep these books. And another thing, too, is that you can keep these books in the drawers. There are drawers underneath all of your stations where you are. You could keep these books here if you wanted to, because then you'd have a reference that would always be here. You didn't know that before, did you? So I know, I know that, you know, sometimes you don't want to carry a book back and forth, and you want to kind of keep it handy. So you certainly could do that.
You can't get carried away with that, though, because councilmen have keys to the drawers, and sometimes they put stuff in and lock the drawers.
Oh.
You can't get in.
Oh, okay.
Mine stays open.
Is yours open? Are any of them, I was going to say, I don't know that any of them, yours is closed?
No, mine's open.
Yours is open. I was going to say, okay.
They seem to all be open now.
I think they were open for council members.
No, you know, they're, well, and anything that you would have as a reference, certainly council may also benefit from as well, because again, it's the updated version. Just going through the rest of the reference book, though, on tab number four, there's the standards for non-use variances, which are the dimensional variances. And the new members may not understand that there's, that two of the things that you handle. The first one would be the dimensional variances, which are, they want to locate closer to the property line. They want, you know, it's dealing with the dimensions on the property. The second type of a variance that this board is in charge of would be a use variance, which is granting a use that is otherwise not within what the zoning ordinance allows. So this board has the dimensional variances and then also the use variances. There are different standards that apply for both of those, and so you need to be familiar with all those. There are also different voting requirements on those different types of uses, or the, I'm sorry, the variances. Just continuing on through the book, and then I'm going to get into the Open Meetings Act. So the tab five is recommended form motion, for motions granting or denying requests for dimensional variances. Again, that's the first type. And then the second, to page three and page four, are form resolutions for the use variance. So those are just helpful for you. Obviously, you have to fill in the blanks with the information that is applicable and that you receive from the petitioners. But it's just kind of, it keeps you on track. It keeps you focused on what it is that you are required to do. And I said this last time I was here, and I think it bears repeating, your job, really, I mean, any variance that is granted is really breaking the law. It is really, it's something that is outside of what is allowed. And the ordinances are crafted so that it takes into account the needs of the entire community. So it's the neighbors, it's the transportation needs, it's the food, it's the, you know, everything is taken into account when we have the zoning. And so by granting a variance, you are allowing for somebody to violate the law legally. So just, that's what a variance is, is it's really allowing for illegal conduct to occur legally. So you should give variances sparingly. That's really, you really need to find a hardship. And one of the things that I wanted to say as I was listening here, the hardship has to relate to the property. I know that the one petitioner was trying to articulate a hardship, but it was an economic hardship. That is not something that you should consider. The hardship has to relate to the property. So just, again, those are just observations, and that's just a couple of little tidbits here. The next tab is the Zoning Board of Appeals Handbook, which is again from 2006. Hopefully, that'll provide, the newer members especially, I would recommend that the alternates read through that. It provides, just again, what are your job responsibilities. Tab seven is Open Meetings Act, the statutory provisions. And again, that is updated as of yesterday's date. So it is, it is the latest. In fact, the Sunshine Acts have not been amended significantly for, since 1977, the post-Watergate era when they were enacted. And then after, there's like a little blue tab, and then there's this PowerPoint that we're going to go through in a minute on the Open Meetings Act. Tab eight is the Freedom of Information Act, and then behind that, in the blue tab, is again, the PowerPoint. I believe that you have these PowerPoints on your computers. Now, will they travel, they can access them at any time, or is that...
I have, and we can set it up so they can have access to these or given copies.
Okay. And all of this is electronic. So all of the stuff that's here, if you would rather have it electronic, that certainly can be accomplished, and we can give that all to you electronically if that's preferred. But just to go into the Open Meetings Act, and if, I guess, before I start that, any questions generally on what your roles are and what your responsibilities are? Okay. The Open Meetings Act, I'm not going to go through this whole thing, you know, because a lot of you know it. It was the, Open Meeting Act was enacted in 1977. It was a post-Watergate response, and they wanted to have people seeing what was happening in government. Transparency in government is critical to, so that people have faith in what's happening with the government. All meetings of a public body, which this is, is a public body, shall be open to the public and held in a place available to the public. So the door is open, which is a great thing. People feel free to come in and out of this room, and they should feel free to come in and out of the room. Open to the public also means that they can tape record. They can take pictures if they want to. Open to the public means that they can be here and participate, and you cannot stop them from participating in government. I don't need to talk about what's a public body. Just know that it applies to this board. You are statutorily created. I do want to talk a little bit about meeting, because a meeting, certainly this is a meeting. That's not disputable. I mean, everybody knows that this is a meeting. But you could have a subcommittee that was meeting, that could be, that could be a meeting. What you also could have is you could have a quorum of your members that are together. Let's say that they go for a site visit, and you have a quorum of your membership that goes to the site and visits the site. That could be a meeting. If it's a meeting, if there is deliberation and discussion, so if you are deliberating towards a decision, not even making a decision, but if there's a quorum of a public body, and you are deliberating towards a decision, then it's going to be a meeting. And you need to comply with the Open Meetings Act. You need to provide notice in advance. You need to have it open to the public. You need to provide the public with the right to comment. One of the things that you don't think about with meetings is a possible electronic meeting. Electronic meeting would be, and hopefully from the last time, you guys have eliminated that reply to all button from your computers. Hopefully, you never, ever, ever use that when you're communicating, because you could have an email meeting. It could be an electronic meeting, and you would be violating the Open Meetings Act if it's more than a quorum that's participating. I understand that you need to get information. It does not, if you're getting information from Mr. Evans or from Ms. Lancaster, then you can do that individually. They can send out information to you as a body, but you only should be replying to your staff members. You should not be replying to anyone else, because if you do, then there's going to be perception that it's a meeting. Yes?
So to ask what I think is a real thing that has occurred, if Mr. Evans sends out something about the next meeting, Ms. Lancaster's copied, all of its copied, the alternates are copied, and it's basically, here's the agenda, let me know if anything else would want to be added, and one of the board members, such as myself or others, keep back and hit all, reply all, and say, we'd like to include X, Y, and Z. And then somebody else says, that's a good idea. Is that a meeting?
It is. It is. And we'll pretend that, and I'm sure that it was compliant, because there was no deliberation towards a decision. However, eliminate that reply to all button. Eliminate it. Never, ever use it, because if you use it, then you risk a potential Open Meetings Act violation.
That was technically wrong.
Hypothetically, hypothetically, that could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Again, with one person responding, just because we are being recorded, I'm sure, with one person responding, that's not a quorum that's responding. So again, you wouldn't have the deliberation. So I'm very confident that we would prevail if that were challenged. But yes, it is a meeting, and most people don't think about that. The same thing goes for texting, or, you know, if you're texting to a number of people all at once, it's kind of the same thing as email. It can be a meeting, even though you're not physically present in a room. It still can be a meeting. Less likely is a telephone conference, but again, same principles apply. It could be a meeting if you're all on a conference call or something. So don't do that. Again, the way that you can get things done are you have your staff members here, and your staff members can disseminate information to all of you at once. And you can communicate individually with your staff members. They can compile the information. It's just that you guys cannot communicate with one another and deliberate. Okay? All right. Yeah, go ahead.
So I think the slides here on page four and five, and I think it's 13, or probably one of, or 11. So informal canvas of individual member positions is not a meeting unless there is a disclosure of the other board member's positions. So I'm kind of, does that mean if one or two or three of us, which is less than a quorum, are talking about, what do you think about this, or what do you think about that, that's informal? Is that something that we should be doing, that we're not allowed to do, or is that something that we are allowed to do?
Let me first preface it by saying that I'm very conservative, and not just because it could be a violation of the Open Meetings Act and we might get sued, but also because our goal is to make sure that the public is confident that the decisions that are being made are being made in the public and after the input of the public and after you hear from, you know, what the public has to say. So because of that, I am very conservative. And so, yes, there are some situations, and there are some cases, the case that I will refer to where it's, and it's kind of one of those gray areas, too. That's another reason why, is it's a very gray area. I hate to be the one to make new case law. I, you know, we don't want to do that, because it just is not beneficial to anyone. But there is a case that does talk about the informal canvas. And that particular case, and this is several years ago, actually, it talks about, they, some members were not satisfied with the city manager of this community. I can't even remember the name of the community right now, but they were not happy with the manager of this community. But that's not the type of a thing that you want to bring up in a public meeting if you don't have a majority of the votes to get rid of the person. So, I mean, it's just really going to cause a lot of dissension. So in that particular case, what they had done was the mayor in that city had called, I believe it, whatever the majority was, if it's nine, it'd be five. They had called five members and inquired if they would vote in favor of, you know, terminating the city manager or not. I don't think that that's a good idea, but in that particular case, it was upheld, because what the mayor did not do is the mayor didn't say, well, council member A says yes, and B says yes, and C says no, and D says yes. That information was not communicated. So it was just getting that information, gleaning it from each of the members. Again, I would much prefer that if that has to ever be done, and I don't know that there would be a situation like that, that you go through the staff. Just makes it a lot cleaner. And again, I would recommend that you not do that at all. I would recommend that all of your decisions... It's good for the public to see that you're struggling with some of these things and that there's some disagreement, and that you're really thinking about all of these issues. I think that's good to see. So I really recommend that you do that here, and especially with the types of things that you're doing, infecting real property. You know, really, if you can, have it made in the open meeting. It's always beneficial. Okay, good question, though. Very good question. Any others? You guys are... I know it's a late night, too, so I can come back at a later, at a later day as well, but just wanted to give you just a primer. You can attend, like, an educational seminar or something, or a grand opening or something, for example. You can do that. Just, again, you can't deliberate towards a decision. You can't discuss it. And again, just be mindful of the appearance. If there are people who see you, and there are a quorum of members that are present at a grand opening or something, and you're all talking and discussing things, and you vote against that person, they're going to assume that you, you know, you had talked amongst one another, and you had kind of, you know, gotten your position figured out ahead of time, and you had discussed it ahead of time. So again, avoid it, avoid it if you can at all costs, and have everything occur in the public meeting. And I've already talked about how you can tape record and how you can do anything. You can, yes, Mr. Chair? You can, yes, Mr. Chair?
Well, if something happens where a violation of the Open Meeting Act occurs, and the end result is that the board, let's quote, "a board," made a decision, and then they get sued, or something's pursued as a violation, and it's found that they were in violation, does it rescind the decision made based on the violation of the OMA?
It could. It could. Now, you can always reenact. That's the, you know, you can always reenact in compliance, but there's other penalties that you have to worry about for violations of the Open Meetings Act. So it's not a good thing. It's just not a good thing to be violating. That's why we're educating. Yes, Mr. Chair?
Two questions. You're speaking in terms of quorum, a majority.
Right.
If two people or three people, less than the majority, what's the limitations on that conversation?
Again, my same cautionary tale. Yes, it's not a quorum, so you don't have a meeting per se, but you're always going to have people that are suspicious.
For the perception.
Yeah, and it's always the perception.
Second one is, I'm reading here on page seven. The Open Meetings Act does not guarantee any, everyone, that everyone will be able to speak on any topic.
Yes. And that was what I was going to go into next, so you have read my mind on that. So, and that is true. Now, I actually, I like being able to observe, and Mr. Neal, I believe that this is your first meeting that you've chaired, if I'm, and I thought you did a marvelous job. You know, that's a very tough job to be in, so I'm going to commend you on that. It is very difficult, but you do have the ability to set rules for, you know, for your, who's coming up and who's speaking. A couple of things that I would really recommend, and I know that tonight you did allow a couple people to come up a couple of different times. That's okay if there are, you know, not many people in here. Again, you're making a great record, and again, you're just showing how, you know, we really want to get all of the information. But if you have a chamber full of people, you're not going to be able to do that. And really, it's the chair that kind of sets the tone for that. What I always recommend is, I always recommend that you tell them ahead of time what the rules are. So, you know, "We're going to let you speak. You can speak once, and that's it." Once it's back to the table, I really, really recommend that you do not entertain anyone from the audience. Just keep it at the table, because otherwise, it's never going to stop. They're going to keep coming up and keep asking. And so that's your point in time when you just really say, "Okay, we've brought it back to the table. Thank you. You know, you'll have your chance later on. You can get ahold of us through email. You can get ahold of us through, you know, many different ways, but we've brought this back. We've already provided for the public comment to occur." So if you have a room full of people, you can limit the time that you allow for each person to come up. That limitation can be, well, it's five minutes for the city council meetings. You do have the timer. You should have access to that timer. If you ever wanted to use it, that's what it's for, is, you know, the five-minute timer. You get the green light when you can go. You get the yellow light when there's one minute left, and it's the caution, and then the red light means you're done. Stop. So if you have a room full of people, absolutely, put that up there. Tell them ahead of time, "This is what's going to happen. You've got five minutes," just so that we can provide, you know, as much time as we can for people. If you have so many people and, you know, you're just hearing the same things, I mean, a lot of it you did tonight, please limit your comments. Tell us what the new things are. All of those are very appropriate things that you can do. However, I'll just give you a couple of cautionary things as well, just a couple of things that might come up, and hopefully they won't. I know that we like them all to sign in and give their name and their addresses. That's a great thing to do. But if you've got somebody who's really adamant that there is no way that they are going to give their name and that they are going to sign in, you explain to them the reasons why you want to know what their address is, because it will help you to decide how relevant their public comments are. That's what you have, I mean, that's how you try and get them to give you their address. But if they don't give it to you, you cannot force it. They can talk. They can talk to you. The other thing is, you cannot limit it to only people who are in the area, only people who live in the city. Anybody gets a chance to talk. I don't care if they live out of state. If they come here and they want to talk, they get the option of doing that. Again, within your rules, you know, five minutes, if you set five minutes, or whatever it is that you've set. Fortunately, you probably have not had to do that, because I didn't see a whole chamber full of people tonight, so that's a good thing. Okay?
Does that ever happen? No.
A chamber full, yeah. It has happened. It has happened. And if it happens, we usually will know, and we will provide you advice ahead of time, and we will hopefully provide you with kind of a template for what you can say ahead of time as far as what the rules will be and all of that. So our attorney will always work with you, Mr. Evans. I know will work with you as well, and they always alert us if there's something that, if Mr. Evans has gotten a lot of comments, he's going to let us know, and then we'll, you know, we'll try and help you out as much as we possibly can. Right? Okay. And I think notice requirements, another thing that's kind of a weird thing, we had a meeting last week of another board, and the board had met for a little bit, and then the board was, we had stopped for a minute, and then they realized that there was an item that they didn't take care of, that it was just a clerical thing that needed to happen. So fortunately, even though the members were out in the parking lot, we brought them all back. One of the things there, instead of, if you adjourn the meeting, and it's, if it's adjourned for more than 18 hours, then you have to call a new meeting. In that case, we recessed the meeting instead of adjourning it, and then we were able to come back and do those other items. So it was still the same meeting, because if it wasn't the same meeting, then you have to do the notification again, and you have to start all over again. And there are notification, notification is required. You also have your schedule that's approved. I think it's in the first meeting of the year that you approve your schedule for the year. If you have any changes to that schedule, you really need to have a formal action, and then you need to post that. We post it on the Wilton Boards, we post it on the calendar of the city. But you really need to make sure that you're having the notice and you're complying with the notice. Special meetings, I don't know if you've ever had to have a special meeting, but that is allowed, and you can do that with the chair. You have to, again, comply with the notice provisions, and you have to make sure that everybody is notified of that. Minutes, your minutes are available, they have to be available, within eight business days after the meeting. That's a statutory requirement. And then, once you approve them, then they have to be available to the public within five days. So that's something that, again, keeps us on the straight and narrow. That's on page 11, in case you're trying to follow along in the books. I don't know that you'll ever have a closed session. Probably is not something that you'll ever have to do. If you do, believe me, we'll provide you with the guidance at that point in time, and we'll make sure that they're still compliant with the Open Meetings Act. And just again, the penalties. Violations of the OMA, again, you can have an invalidation of the decision. You can have a lawsuit filed, and the lawsuit can be filed by the AG, by the county prosecutor, somebody who has been harmed by the action. It can, you know, and then also, if it gets to be an intentional violation, then you're also looking at possible additional penalties, and it's a crime. I mean, it's a misdemeanor if it's an intentional violation, and it's up to $1,000 of a fine. And for second offense, it's up to a year in jail and $2,000 for a fine. So, so those are pretty steep fees that you would have to have. Now, again, assuming that you're acting within, you know, your duties here, and you're doing the best that you possibly can, then, then the city will represent you if there is an Open Meetings Act violation. We don't think it's ever going to happen, because you're here today, you're listening, and I know that you've taken in all of this, and you're going to go home, and you're going to read all of this. So there won't be any Open Meetings Act violations, but if there were, the city would defend you, unless it's an intentional situation, and then you're kind of on your own with the penalties and also with the defense of yourself. So, so it is important that you know what the law is. And then, the second thing, and I'm just going to touch on it just a little bit, and that's the Freedom of Information Act. The Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act, they both go together, and I've given you the whole PowerPoint and everything. You really don't need to know all of the technical things about how to fulfill it. What you really need to know is just that everything that you produce and everything that you have that's relating to your role as a zoning, a BZA member, is going to be a public document. That includes emails. That includes, you know, the whole package. The whole packet is going to be subject to the Freedom of Information Act, and it would be available to the public upon request. So just know that. So every email, if you send Paul an email saying, Mr. Evans an email saying, you know, even if it's something as benign as, "I'd like to see this on the next agenda," that is going to be a public record. So just always be mindful of that. Yes, Mr. Fisher?
Do we archive any of our things on our home computers that come through?
If it's something that Mr. Evans, that has gone through Mr. Evans, then no. There is no need to do that, because that's already in the city's system. If Mr. Evans is a recipient of it, or Ms. Lancaster, then no. You do not need to do that. If it's something that we wouldn't have in the city, then I would recommend that you send that to Mr. Evans, and then he can take care of that, and then you won't have to. So, I didn't talk with him before recommending this, but it's just a little bit easier for you. And then also, if we ever were to get sued, what I don't want happening is, I don't want persons being able to take your personal computers and go through all of them, and especially you, Mr. Barton, knowing you're an attorney, you know, there are certain confidentiality provisions that you need, and I'm sure all of you have, you know, some interests like that. I would hate to have them be able to access your personal computers. So in order to avoid it, if you have a policy of, you know, if Mr. Evans already has it, that's great. You don't have to do anything else. It's already saved. If it's an email that he sent you, he's obviously still got it. He's doing the archiving that he needs to do. It's just if you have something outside, you know, if somebody has given you something. And that's another thing, too. If somebody, if a petitioner or somebody has given you something, please give it to Mr. Evans, so that he can give it to all of you, because really, this board, you need to have everything. I mean, you need to know, everybody needs to have the same information when you're making your decision. It just is going to result in a better decision. So, so please get it to him and distribute, distribute that, and he'll distribute that information to all of you, so that you can use it for your decisions. And that's a very, very quick primer on FOIA and the Open Meetings Act, and I've given you the written materials, but are there questions that you have?
I have one that I always think is amusing. State law requires that you keep a separate set of minutes on closed sessions.
Yes.
Minutes by definition are the actions and resolutions of the body. In a closed meeting, you can't have actions or resolution.
That is correct, and that's-
But you still have to keep the minutes.
Well, the minutes that we have, without disclosing what we have, the minutes that we have are the date, the time that the meeting started, the time that the meeting ended, and the persons who were present. That's it.
See, I used to put a little comment about what was discussed in the open-
And that's always in the open session, because any time that there's an open session, and I'll, I mean, again, this is an area of law where everybody has a different thing. Some, like you, Mr. Courtney, you can't be discussing and making any decisions, so there should be no minutes that really, you know, there are no decisions. But some communities like to detail what the discussion is, for whatever reason. And then there's some, you know, back and forth about, "When do you approve those minutes? Do you approve them at the next meeting?" When you, because you can't approve the minutes when it's-
We don't approve them.
Right, exactly. We don't approve them. We just, they're noted and filed.
I used to keep them when you had, when closed sessions were allowed-
Yeah.
For other things, too.
Right, right. But, yeah, that's the whole thing. You can't approve minutes, because you can't take any action. And so if you were to approve the minutes, then that's taking action, and you can't do that in a closed session. So, yeah, so it's an anomaly, and just a little tidbit of information. Any questions about your role as a BZA member? Any questions about variances? Anything that's arisen that, now, obviously, Ms. Lancaster and I and Mr. Evans are going to have to do a little bit of work on the matter that was before you tonight, because I do remember being involved in that, what is it, seven, eight years ago or something, peripherally. So we'll get you that information. We'll have to, I don't recall it all offhand. It's only been seven or eight years ago, so, but we'll, we'll get a refresher, and we'll try and work with the petitioners as much as we can. But again, I wanted to commend you, because your questions were very right on point, and, you know, again, you allowed the audience members to participate, and, you know, again, I was glad to have seen, to have seen the democracy in action, I guess.
Laurie, wasn't it true that for the alternates, well, actually for the board, that this was kind of a meaty matter for your first-
Yeah.
-item on the board?
Yes.
It was pretty meaty.
Is this one of the more complicated situations?
Yes. This is absolutely. I think, and the rest of you can attest to this, but I think most of what you do are going to be the dimensional variances. I mean, I would say probably 60, 70% of what you do are going to be-
Truck parking.
Yeah, yeah. Use variances, you know, maybe, maybe some of that, but most of it's going to be dimensional variances. They want to put a sun deck on the back of their property, and it's too close to their neighbor's yard, and, you know, that's, that's most of what you're going to do, the sun room on the back, they want a deck, they want, you know, whatever it is, it's going to be a dimensional variance. It's going to be too close to the property line. And so that's what most of them are, so please do not be dissuaded by the complications that you saw tonight. You know, again, that does not diminish the importance of what this body does, because again, what you do is very important. There are situations where there are-